Three presenters at the center table here, I think that'll be the easiest. We do rebroadcast for the citizens at home, so if you could pass the microphone back and forth if anybody asked questions. And I think all of us have the same goal here of making Wood Dale a safer and better community, and we appreciate all of your efforts in trying to achieve that. I'll start off with the first question. I was at a seminar of the Illinois Municipal League, and one of the speakers on the subject of traffic light enforcement, red light camera enforcement, said that there is a study that was done that if a photo enforcement is done as one intersection, it not only improves the safety of that intersection, but all four surrounding intersections as well. Are any of you familiar with that? Is that true? Or ...
Yeah.
You need to grab the microphone.
Yeah, actually, I can speak with that. Speak to that. And strangely enough, as many programs as are implemented across the country, very few have had studies done on them, given the numbers that there are out there, because they're well over 300. But what we have seen, and there was a specific study done fairly early, even in Oxnard, California, is what we call the halo effect. So what it is, is as you introduce a program, one of the key elements, as well as public awareness and public education, so you let the public know, and you want the public to know
Whoops.
[laughing] That you're going to put these cameras out there, because the whole intent is change their driving behavior. So you want it highly publicized, and you want the public to look at this and go, "We don't know where they are," or maybe we'd know exactly where they are, but they may not always know which approach that is being actually enforced. So the halo effect is that people start slowing down all around the area, because it's very curious. You'll see people, "Oh, I think that's a camera." It's like, "Well, that's a light, but that's okay." If that has the ultimate effect, that they actually slow down and stop at these red lights, then that's the goal. And the technology is set up to be very conservative, so that most people end up seeing the yellow light when they're 60 feet or more in front of the stop bar.
Comments or questions? Alderman Wesley?
I have a few, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fittner, where did you get your data from, and when was that taken?
Which data?
For the intersection.
Regarding Thorndale and Wood Dale?
Yeah. When did you go out there and check and see what we were going to do for safety concern?
June 23rd, approximately.
June 23rd of this year, right?
Correct.
Okay. My question, and I'm going to bring this totally up to you. We have been on this project since May 2007 to adopt this program. We signed a contract with ACS in 2007 July. We contacted Chairman Pam Riley from the Page County Transportation Seeking Permanent Installation Equipment and discussing deciding this intersection in 2007. September 2007, our chief met with you personally regarding this situation. To indicate that the program was not necessary, your comment was indication that this program was not necessary, as we overrated by law enforcement and other solutions should be sought, 2007. 2008, February 2008, resolution was passed by the Wood Dale City Council, by the Page County Board, to support a red light enforcement by Wood Dale Police Department. June 2008, the Page County Transportation Committee Agenda Item for Adoption of Policy of Red Light Photo Enforcement Table to Further Investigation. Now, we are here now today, and you, as a county, we have brought this to your attention in May 2007. Why is it taking you guys so long, and now in June you go out and look at this site, and to delay this process?
For a variety of reasons. First of all, it's important that when that came to our committee first. Well, let me back up to when the chief visited me. My initial thoughts were, it didn't, it wasn't something I was that excited about. The chief pointed out that there are approximately six to eight accidents per year relating to red light running specifically, and that the installation of a red light camera would reduce those accidents by about 40 to 50 percent. He also mentioned that about 12,000 tickets per year would be issued in exchange for the reduction of four accidents. And in addition, it was pointed out, or actually, I brought it up based on his documentation, that the safety of the intersections in Wood Dale has increased for four of the past five years. So my initial thought with that initial meeting was, you mean to tell me that the safety of the intersections for the past four out of five years is getting better? There's only six accidents to begin with at this intersection. You're going to bring it down to approximately four or so, in exchange for about 12,000 tickets? On a county-run intersection, I wasn't too excited about it. Subsequently, and I'll be frank with you, it didn't make sense at that time. Now, I've had a chance to discuss this with various aldermen, and it's been at the committee. Again, the first time it went to committee was to adopt the five accident-per-intersection rule that IDOT says you can do. The committee decided that we wanted to look at accident severity and accident rates, not just a flat number, and that took some study. We wanted to see if there's other ways to make the intersection safer, so we sent somebody out eventually to this intersection and came up with some safety measures. The other counties at the time weren't jumping on this bandwagon either. Municipalities, certainly. Cook County, definitely. IDOT, yes, but the counties themselves were not. In my district, which encompasses seven communities, they're not all in agreement, these are great, this is a great idea anyways. So the confluence of all that, I think, has had the committee slow down a little bit. Again, I'll point out to you that you have two intersections that are 100 percent less safe and 50 percent less safe than the intersection that in question here. And tomorrow, you can put a red light camera in those intersections if you feel the county's moving too slowly.
Alderman Caddella?
Mr. Fittner, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying, and that any of your constituents watching understand too. You're saying the cost to save four accidents, which could save a life or more, is 12,000 tickets? And that's part of the reason that this committee dug their heels in and dragged? I mean, and these aren't 12,000 bogus tickets. These are 12,000 tickets for breaking the law. And I don't know, perhaps, you know, our police chief has a better understanding of the history of traffic lights, but maybe it's 80 years, maybe it's 90 years, maybe it's 100 years. Reds mean stop. I mean, this is breaking the law. So to say that you're not in favor of it, you're not for it, you're not thinking that this is the right thing to do, and even talk about, you know, looking at alternatives to make it safer, the fact of the matter is, you even talked about if red light camera was installed, how you would look at an option of maybe three months or something like that of warning tickets. Once again, I mean, I have to say that, I have to ask the question, is not running a red light breaking the law for which, you know, I mean, whether there's a camera there or not, if you do it, and with the technology, if it can be proven that it was done, doesn't that deserve a ticket? But bigger issue than that is, why doesn't this intersection deserve a light? I mean, I think you brought some facts that I haven't had an opportunity to verify if they're true or not, but kind of just going back to the original statement, 12,000 tickets is a cost to save approximately four accidents which might involve a life. Odds seem to be in the favor of wanting to install this light. Thank you.
Well, I'll reiterate my first statement, which was, I'm in favor of red light cameras. And I said that at the beginning, only after all potential safety measures are taken into account and accomplished at that intersection. We have an intersection that has some problems that are being addressed, as I pointed out on that map. In fact, when I heard about the tragedy that occurred, they mentioned somebody was turning left onto Thorndale Avenue. Well, look at that stop bar that's way back there. I don't know if that's the corner or not, but when I heard that, I'm thinking that might be it. So perhaps that accident could have been avoided if that bar was moved up where it should be. I don't know, but the point is that I think that a red light camera should only be used after all safety options are exhausted, and they haven't been yet.
That particular accident tragic that it was, was eastbound Thorndale to northbound Wood Dale Road, so unfortunately, this would not have affected that. Chief Minowitz?
I wasn't planning on saying anything tonight, but I feel I should chime in. Based on our video validation of the intersection and several studies that we've looked at there, we're looking at about 4,500 tickets a year for good solid red light violations at that intersection, not 12,000. Secondly, talked with IDOT today down in Springfield, since 2000 and 2008, there's been three deaths on Thorndale Avenue, traffic accident fatalities. Two have been directly attributed to red light violations, and one was due to other vehicular movements which were illegal. There have been no deaths on Irving Park Road. Currently, right now, Wood Dale, Addison, Bensonville, Roselle, and Glendale Heights have plans where they'd like to have red light cameras installed on county highways. This is something that not only has been looked at by the chiefs, but also by the rest of these communities. There's 52,000 cars a day that go through that intersection. That's the average daily count. That says 2002. That figure is no longer valid. There hasn't been a recent traffic count at that intersection for almost six years now. The traffic is now on Thorndale Avenue. It's not Irving Park Road. That's where we have to be. With regards to Grove Street and Route 83, Bensonville's pursuing a light at that intersection. That's their jurisdiction. Prospect and Irving Park Road is Itasca's jurisdiction. Addison and Irving Park Road's a T-intersection, which can be safely enforced with putting police officers out there and not endangering them. The majority of the violations at that intersection are right-hand turn on red violations. Very few are left, which cause right-angle crashes.
Alderman Chalky?
Just a couple of things, if I may. You mentioned about the strong point about revenue sharing. Are you saying that the county would be taking part in the cost of putting a camera? Or just taking the money, part of the money we get? Because we're talking about putting that money probably into the police retirement fund. It's not like we're trying to make a bundle on it. So I don't think you've made any offers that you're going to help pay for the camera, just that you want a part of the profits. Secondly, if I may, to follow up on what our chief was saying, you know, Irving and Wood Dale and Irving and Addison Road are, Wood Dale and Irving, it's not a highway. When you're talking about Thorndale, you're talking about a highway where people consider the speed limit to be 65 or more. They don't look at the 45 mile an hour speed limit. It wasn't that long ago, and I wish I had kept a copy of it, that a woman wrote into the Herald and said, you know, the woman on the other side coming towards me was turning left on a green arrow, and I wanted to make a right on a red. Now, who has a right of way? To me, that, we can't legislate stupidity. We really can't. We're talking about, somebody said, 300 and 380 violations per month over there, and the thing is, any one of those violations can result in a death because of the speed over there. We're not talking about doing 35 or 40 miles an hour. We're talking about doing high speeds. And that's why, in my estimation, we should be going with a camera up there where it's really needed. You've got two stoplights close to each other by Prospect and Walnut in Itasca, so cars tend to slow down in that area, especially with the bright lights from Topgolf and so forth. But there's really nothing in that area except the gas stations in Wood Dale and Thorndale. So everybody's going as fast as they can to make it, and that's why the one death, I think, I don't know if it was a red light or not, but I know that my son-in-law was involved in one recently, and the other driver had no insurance. So it's going to take court cases, and it's going to take years to get any of his payment, you know, what he, damage on his car paid off. If we had had a red light camera there, there would have been no question about it. So thinking about where we're going to put the money, and thinking about the speed that goes on over there, I still think that this is something that should be done. I know it takes time. Takes time for us to get things done too, but it's been 14 months now, and I think perhaps that maybe in the next coming months, something should be done on the county part about it. Thank you.
I think with the revenue aspect that I brought up before, that was brought up, and it's totally in flux, but I've heard that it would be very detrimental to put any kind of revenue sharing in. I don't support that. I think 100 percent to the municipalities is fine with me. Others think the exact opposite. One person is pushing for 100 percent to the county, because it is 100 percent county intersection. So that's the kind of discussion that we're having on this committee, and it's not easy. And please call the other committee members with that.
If I may follow up then, if they want 100 percent, that would be fine, if they would pay for the camera to be put in there. That's what we're looking for, is a safety, not about getting the money. It's the safety we're concerned with. Thank you.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Politikers like to thank you for sending someone out from the county to take a look at the intersection and potential improvements. Secondly, though, a comment that, to me, what's compelling about this particular intersection versus others is the car-to-truck ratio, that I actually try and avoid this intersection, because I feel the trucks are coming down Thorndale at high speeds, and I believe that if there's ever a car-to-truck accident, the truck is going to win. And I have fear in it, and that's to me what's different about this intersection. So I think at a very minimum, a pilot program would be helpful to take a look at this. Thank you.
Alderman Coles?
I believe in August of last year, I sent along, correction, October of last year, I was working with our city attorney to try to send along an initiative for a pilot program at this intersection. We had attainable goals. We had indicators. I really, I asked the county, "Please, give us the opportunity to do what we have to do up here." This is about a police initiative. This is about trying to change behavior. We're looking at the county right now. We need their help. They have to give us the last piece that we need to complete this project. And that project is a permit, and it can be very easily done with instituting a pilot program here. We have some measurable goals. We'll be able to share data with them, so that they can make their decision in a more leisurely manner in the future. And all we're asking is, please, give us a chance to be able to do what we do best, and that's maintain public safety within our community.
Alderman Wesley?
That memo was sent to you guys on October 11, 2007, with no response from the county board on the memo as a pilot program. That's a problem that I have when we send documents and want a response, we aren't getting any response. The other thing, what your data that you have came forward with today, have you forwarded over to our police department to compile the data? And maybe we would look at that. Has that been forwarded to us?
I'd be glad to do that.
But I'm just saying, when was that data taken?
About two weeks ago.
Okay. But again, like I said, Mr. Fittner, this has been a year project. You know what? If the county wants a project done with us, you know, like a road project that we went in on, on Hawthorne, we did it. We didn't hesitate. All we want is answers. If you're delaying it, then tell us why you're delaying it, and that. We have not had that opportunity. We keep saying it's being stalled. So now, how long, now, how much longer is it going to take for you people, as county members, to make it a decision, yes or no? How far are we in that?
Well, in all candidness, if the decision was made a year ago, up or down vote on the red light camera policy, it would have been no, is my opinion. So the fact that it's been dragged out is to your advantage, and I will certainly be glad to take this information back. I did want to clarify that there is an option that is possible, where the county would get 100 percent of the revenues as long as we pay for the camera. Is that truly something that the city would entertain?
Are you, if that's the case, are you taking over the intersection for your accidents too? Are you going to send the county police out there? Because we tie, when those signals go out, and I'll tell you that one's got to, when those signals go out, the power go out there, our Wood Dale Police Department are out there for hours dragging traffic. Are you going to guarantee us that you're going to have county out there to maintain that intersection too?
Well, I was responding to a comment from one of the aldermen.
Well, that would be, that would be the discussion that I would have with you.
That would be, the response would be, well, if we're going to be, do more for that intersection?
Speaking only for myself, because I know I should never speak for the city council, the answer would be yes. The purpose of the program is public safety. That's got to be the overwhelming concern here. So yeah, if you want to front the costs on any of the intersections, I think you should keep the revenue. Yes. But that's only my opinion. Any final comments? Alderman Coles?
You stated that you wanted 50 percent at first. You said 50 percent of the fines, because that's what I remember you saying. And if you're going to, if we're going to give you 50 percent, we want 50 percent from you for cost to put the camera up. Plus, when something goes wrong, we want to be billed the county that 50 percent of the cost of repairing anything. I mean, you're asking for us to, say, split, if the fine is $100, $50 goes to you, $50 comes to us, but you're not going to spend any expenses at all on repair? Oh, no way. No way. I mean, what goes one way is going to come the other way. Remember that.
Two brief comments on that.
And I've got one more thing else. And you also said that Irving Park, you've got to remember Irving Park is route, is a state highway. You didn't mention that. That's a state highway. That is not a, so you've got the same thing, is if we want to put a camera up, we still have to contact IDOT, because that's a state highway.
And you fully qualify, based on the five number of accidents, you fully qualify for any IDOT highway. You can put them up very quickly. The other comment about the revenue sharing, I think you should get 100 percent. I'm explaining to you some of the cross-currents at the county, at the committee level, where somebody wants 100 percent, somebody wants 50 percent, and I'm just trying to get a feel for what the cities believe. I think you should get it all, because, you know, we have an agreement where you take care of that intersection, you patrol it, you know, you should get that revenue. But I'm one member of five, and I'm trying to explain the committee structure and what's going on there.
I think it's important we not get into a discussion of whether it's the city's revenue, the county's revenue, or we split, because the more we get involved in that discussion, the longer it's going to delay the implementation of the red light camera if that decision is made. So let's first make the decision about the camera, and then we'll work out the details after the fact.
It's all intertwined, Mayor. That's the problem at the committee, and, you know, if you were in our seat, and there's the money issues brought forth, there would be some members of your committee that would have similar discussions, and...
But I think the last thing the county or the municipality wants is another tragedy to occur while we're discussing how we're dividing up the pie.
Right.
I think the problem has to be fixed first. Any final comments? Alderman Lewitin?
As long as Dan has made this a show and tell issue, also, I'd like to give my show and tell. My wife was rear-ended back in 2000, in the early winter, on Thorndale Road at Middle. And if we can, and if we have a red light here, there's going to be some ripple effect. The woman who rear-ended her was in an SUV and doing her makeup while she was coming into a red light. I would rather she be looking for the red light camera than her red rouge. So I think that it's very important to have a camera there, and I have the same visceral feeling about that road also. I think it's a fallacy for you to say that you go by ratio of accidents, ratio of violations, that the more vehicles you have going down the road, the more violations and the more accidents you're going to have, so you don't raise the flag in cases where the ratio stays the same. Well, you know, if you've got more terrorists crossing an unguarded border, because more and more people are crossing that border, doesn't mean you ought to leave it empty, because the ratio's the same. But I do appreciate that you are one of the, you are saying that you are one person among five who is definitely for the camera, for the city administering it, because also, I realize you know than I know, county ain't got the cops to get out there and handle all those accidents and tickets and everything at that corner, because the county is sure a big, bigger area than Wood Dale. And you got to spread it, you got to spread it out over a larger area. We're more concentrated. As long as we're talking about show and tell, what about the police officer who was hit over there? Well, his car was parked while he was writing the ticket, because he couldn't even see a cop car. But we appreciate that you're the lone voice for reason at the county level. Thank you, Paul.
Any final comments, questions, by the city council? Alderman Wesley?
One question. Paul, when will this be discussed again in your committee?
I'll have to ask the chairman. She sets the agenda. Pam Ryan.
Do you know if I are chief?
Pardon?
Could you know if I are chief, when you're going to talk about again?
Sure.
I mean, Paul, if it means that we, as council members, and I'm not speaking for the whole council, but if it means that the mayor has to appoint two council members and the chief to meet with your board, I'm sure the chief, I mean, the mayor wouldn't care, but let's, let's go. I mean, a year. Okay? I see your point. It's a year now.
There's a reason, though.
Well, I understand the reason, though, Paul, but we can't get the board to respond to the letters that we sent. No response. That's the problem. But when they ask us for something, keep in mind, we tolerate, and we give in. Okay? So I think it's time to meet halfway at the table and try ironing this out in the next couple of months.
And I will discuss with the chairman why you did not receive response to that letter, because that's inappropriate. Thank you.
Paul, we thank you for coming here, as well as our other two speakers. Before you pack up, I promised I'd give you the last word, but hopefully you'll back, take back to the Transportation Community Committee. I think you heard loudly and strongly from us that our strong desire that if this has to be a pilot program, or that you get your policy enacted, that it'd be done as quickly as possible. Mr. Fittner?
Taking the words out of my mouth, thank you for having me, and I appreciate your thoughts on this. And again, it's important to have this kind of discussion, so I can go back to the other four and have a similar discussion. Thank you.
And the last thing I have under Mayor's report, you'll notice that there's someone new sitting on my left here. We're pleased that Mr. Walter Douthwait has accepted the position of city manager with the city of Wood Dale. Walter has served as, Mr. Douthwait has served as manager of Wheeling, served as manager of Displanes, and most recently, as economic development director for the city of Maywood. So we're pleased to have him on board, and we look forward to years of service. And that turns it over to Mr. Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given the fact that this was my fourth day on the job, I don't have a whole lot to report other than Assistant Manager Murmers was kind enough on Monday to direct me correctly to the men's room. And there's an old saying in this business, in the...